I credit Brad. I credit his back.
Let's put it away, Mike.
How's everything in LA?
You're off to the purple too.
Yeah. She wears a soap on her hair. I brought some jeans. Jeans got over that.
Looks good.
Once a week. He's all, you know, I've heard of that, it's like jeans and shorts.
The professor's graduation party in September.
He's a good guy.
A little bit.
Well, I got my invitation. It's due to the channel. If you're registered, remember you have to.
It started for household seven.
I want to go on Sunday.
Let me in, Lord, of the blood and allegiance.
Blood and allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Or any executive sanctions?
There were none.
On the comment?
Jeff Dunkle Palo Alto, happy birthday Boots.
Thank you, sir.
Start off again with Mr. Hatter. We're at 120 days now, I guess we'll just keep track of this like we had to for the suspension. I don't understand how an investigation can take 120 days. People in the courthouse that were involved with it or should be interviewed haven't even been talked to yet. So 120 days for an open-ended consultant to investigate is a little crazy. Also, the Lisa Stevens payroll debacle, no update on that, I'm sure. But I'll just keep bringing these up week after week until we get an answer. The mysterious building that is bought over in the Jalapa section of Potts, 100,000 gallons of water in it. Over 100,000 gallons of water, that's absolutely insane. I think he's paid almost 400,000 for that with an issue like that. I would never purchase a property like that. And then the neighbor had a call to let yous know, yous might want to check it. 100,000 gallons. That's equivalent to 26,000 bathtubs full of water in the building. That's absolutely mind-blowing. And then to have the fire company there to pump it all out, I mean, it's crazy. So shout out to the fire company for doing that. Boots, we're going to bring up again about you violating the conflict of interest. I don't care what the solicitor's office says, I'm pretty sure the state overrides them by voting for your brother. You were also on record, numerous articles and on at meeting, I have it on the recording, stating that no Heatherington will receive any funds this year, which was again a blatant lie. Your brother's getting money. And doesn't he live out in the Northwest? He doesn't even live in School County. Blows my mind, but he's on a lot of the, actually on B and R farms. And if you've got money from B and R farms and now he's getting money as his own, that's double dipping in conflict of interest. So 80-some farms that are on a waitlist and you're conniving your way into getting more money. We'll just keep digging deeper on that, but 100% violation and the more I dig, the more screwed you are, so just get ready. Speaking of nepotism, Larry, I see the kickbacks are already in session for you. Your campaign manager, I believe he was, an open-ended $30,000 contract today, so hopefully you don't vote on that. And I encourage the other two not to vote on it because it's pure corruption. Spoke with two IT people since the agenda was out. They said it would take less than a week to determine that this county is outdated with the MIS department. Possibly up to another week to come up with a game plan to fix it. So I'm not sure why we have an open-ended $30,000 contract, $120 an hour. That's just mind-blowing. And then to be your campaign manager, come on, that's, I'm still waiting for that job when you get rid of Ken Hatter, you know what I mean, I was promised that. So after this evaluation's done, if you move forward with it, which you probably shouldn't, will that be put out the bid to do the work? Because this wasn't put out the bid at all that I sent. And how wasn't this put out the bid?
It's a professional service contract, it's not subject to bidding, and your time's up.
Okay, but it is a conflict of interest being his campaign manager.
Look it up. You guys have no clue what is your bottom line.
Any other public comment?
Good morning, Melinda Diver, North Mannheim Township. I'd just like to say, when members of the public show up at these meetings, sorry if I'm distracting you Larry from your paperwork there. When we show up at these meetings, whether it's Jeff, members of the press, myself included, we have other things that we could be doing. But we're coming here to be a voice for the public, to be a watchdog for the taxpayers of this county. So I kind of like to dovetail on something that Jeff has already brought up today. On behalf of MIS, Boyle Electro-Mechanical. So a contract cap of, what was it, 33,000, not to exceed 33,000. Consulting. What is it that they're consulting on? What are they consulting on?
Can I interrupt your time?
Sure.
They're looking at our entire internal system for our programming and stuff because we're having some issues with that. And we need somebody that'll give us an honest, unbiased answer.
Okay, so do you feel like, because there are several employees in MIS that are pulling down around 100 grand a year in a salary. They have been there for a long time. Are they not to be trusted? Are you saying these are untrustworthy individuals that cannot provide a fair assessment on the systems there in MIS? Do they not have the expertise?
They have a workload that is high and they, this is something that somebody from the outside needs to look at.
So I understand, okay, I understand that this is a professional services contract, not required to be placed out on bid, but perhaps we should have considered that. Not even considered. 33,000, go for it Nick. Charge us whatever you want. For six months of work, really? Interesting, and we're backdating contracts. Because according to this, it takes effect July 1st. And you're not even going to vote on it until when? Next week? But it's being, it started on Monday? How does that work? You haven't approved it yet, but it's already started.
But she not speak July, that's, please, please.
I'm sorry, Larry. Once again, you had stated in that debate that was held prior to the primary last year, you stated that you were going to do away with a lot of these outside consultants being brought in for buku dollars.
State consultants.
Oh, oh, so we can still, we can still keep.
Melinda, if you're going to spend money, it should be set with people from School County.
You need to be a better steward of the taxpayer dollars. We don't even know really what this contract is for. What are they being paid to consult on and at this price?
Time. Thanks.
Any other public comment? If not, I'd like to move on to the meeting. Cheryl.
Good morning Commissioners. Okay, this morning I actually have four motions for you, the fourth was inadvertently missed. First, approval of change order number one to a contract with J. Phillips Excavating and Hauling LLC for $4,108, increasing the contract from $52,774 to $56,882. This is for additional yardage needed for a CDBG ADA project in West Penn Township. Next, permission to advertise for demo projects in West Penn Township, the boroughs of St. Clair and the borough of Shenandoah. Bids will be due in the Controller's Office on Monday, July 29th at 4:00 PM. Bid opening will take place on Wednesday, July 31st at 9:00 AM. Tentative award date is August 14th. Next, approval of change order number one to a contract with Trendsetters Investment LLC for $30,000. This will increase the contract from $38,880 to $68,880. This is to build a support wall for Five West Ogden Street, which is being impacted by the demolition of Seven and Nine West Ogden Street, Girardville. And then finally, what was missed was permission to advertise for a CDBG project at the North Middle Ward Playground in Tamaka. Bids will be done via PennBid and must be submitted by 9:00 AM Wednesday, August 14th, at which time they will be opened. That one I'm going to put on for new business next week. Thank you.
Also, I think just to do clarification on that, can I make a motion that that be added to the agenda? On what Cheryl just positioned as it was omitted, so that way it's, it's good. From what I understand, that's what should be done, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll second that, I'll second that motion.
No question.
Commissioner Pedro.
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington.
Yes.
Commissioner Hess.
Yes.
Lisa Stevens. No problem, sorry.
You've never done this, Commissioner.
Good morning Commissioners. On behalf of Children Youth, Carl Rumble, Assistant Administrator. We have two advisory board appointments, an addendum to an existing agreement, seven agreements to present. First, we request approval to reappoint Joanne Dower and Gwen Holden to another three-year term on the Children Youth Advisory Board with a term of July 2nd, 2024 to July 1st, 2027. The addendum is with regard to the agreement with Access Services out of Fort Washington, and that agreement is dated June 28th, 2023. And this addendum would extend its term period to include fiscal year 2024, 2025 at current rates. And it adjusts indemnification provisions and add training requirements with an end date June 30th, 2025. The following five agreements each have a term period of July 1st, 2024 to June 30th, 2025. First is with Tegna Broadcast Holding LLC, which does business as WNEP-TV for foster parent recruitment advertising. Terms include 20 commercials monthly on WNEP television stations at $3,730 per month. And the terms include a total cap at $44,760. Next, we have an agreement with Psychological Associates of School County LLC out of Pottsville for counseling services with rates as follow. Brief screening is at $425 per unit. Forensic assessments, psychosexual assessments, mental abuse or bonding evaluations are each at $150 per hour. Polygraph testing is at $400 per unit. Individual and family counseling are at $100 per hour. Group counseling is at $40 per session unit. And this year their agreement includes mandatory training at $195 per unit. Next, we have an agreement with the Academy out of Malvern, PA. They offer Academy Community-Based Program. It's the title of the program. It's an in-home service for adjudicated delinquent youth. And it is at $60.87 per diem. They also offer counseling services with rates as follow. Individual and family counseling is at $106.71 per hour. Group counseling is at $39.01 per hour. And their psychosexual evaluations are at $378 per unit. Next, we have an agreement with Bethany Children's Home out of Wolmestorf, PA. They offer residential services and their per diem rates are as follow. Their general residential program is at $412.25. The intensive residential program is at $475. The independent living program is at $695. Their shelter care program is at $475. Supervised independent living at $456.37. And their transitional living program at $711.95. The last agreement with that traditional fiscal year 23, 24 term is with Families United Network out of Muncie. They offer foster care services with per diem rates as follow. Child age zero to 21 is at $72.97. Their mother-child program is at $125.62. Transitional foster care is at $145.11. And intensive is at $108.90. They also offer residential services with per diem rates as follow. Arborvale Manor, the life readiness program for boys is at $255.09. The Ashler Manor program for girls, Level 1, is at $273.22. Level 2 is at $282.54. And they also offer shelter care programming at $265.54. Finally, we have two agreements with a two-year term period beginning July 1, 2024 through June 30th, 2026. First of those is with Diversified Treatment Alternatives out of Milton, Pennsylvania for community-based residential treatment services at both the Lewisburg and Downhill locations at $581.56 per diem. And finally, the Children's Home of Pittsburgh out of Pittsburgh, PA for foster care with per diem rates as follow. Age zero to two with minimal needs is at $71. Age zero to two with significant needs is at $76. Age two to 21 with minimal needs is at $79. And age two to 21 with significant needs is at $81. Finally, the medical foster care program is at $88 per diem.
Good morning. I'm requesting a motion to advertise for bids for the replacement of County Bridge 123 Broad Street over the School River in Port Clinton, Barrow. Bids will be received online via the PennBid program by the Controller's Office until 9:00 AM on Wednesday, August 7th. However, bids will be open in the Commissioners' Boardroom at 9:00 AM on Thursday, August 8th, and reported at the Commissioners' Board Meeting scheduled for 10:00 AM afterwards, with a tentative bid award date of Wednesday, August 14th. And there is a non-mandatory pre-bid meeting to be held on July 18th at 11:00 AM.
Controller's Office?
Good morning. I'm asking for approval for myself, the Controller, and Sandy Pacenta, Deputy Controller, to attend the PA State Association of County Controllers Annual Conference. I'm asking for this approval. It's being held in York and it's a four-night stay instead of a three-night, which needs Board approval.
Officer Senior Services?
Good morning Commissioners. Morning. Approval for the out-of-state travel for Darla Troutman at the AmeriCorps Seniors Convening in Baltimore, Maryland from July 29th to August 1st, 2024. The cost for three nights is $482.93. Hotel parking is 102. The approximate round trip mileage is $183.40. And the approximate cost for food is 170. There is no cost for the convening itself and it will include two free lunches. The total approximate cost is $938.33, which is budgeted and funded by AmeriCorps, which is federal funding. Approval of an addendum to extend the contract another fiscal year, 24, 25, with Compass Rose Care Limited of Pottsville for Personal Care Services. The contract cap will be $224,000, which is the same as last fiscal year. Approval of an addendum to extend another fiscal year, 24, 25, with Attorney Stanley Burke of Pottsville for Legal Services. The contract cap is $21,250, same as the prior fiscal year. And requesting to remove the last agenda item. Okay, thank you.
Level one communication, Scott. Morning Scott. Morning Commissioner.
I have one item for consideration. Motion is requested into service agreement with mechanical services of Leola for ADA channel autolog recording system. Cost is going to be $23,570 and will run from August 1, 2024 to July 31st, 2025. And the contract is covered under CoStar's agreement. If I may publicly thank our telecommunicators for last Wednesday. In a two-hour and 15-minute span, they answered 501 calls for telephone calls and dispatched 148 incidents for fire and EMS. So they were a little busy. And we had two of our relatively new employees who were there working as well, so. Just wanted to publicly thank them for that.
They did a good job. Do you have more, do you have more people in training?
Yes, yes.
How many do you have in training?
We have three that are in call-taking right now. Three others just came into the room. They just started.
Just started, okay.
Just started this week, yeah. Thank you, hope to see everybody in poor carbon tomorrow.
How many positions are open yet, so?
Two.
Yes, you're, you're, you're trying to see some.
Yeah.
See a 3-3 and.
3-3 and two.
3-3 that are training, 3 that are coming out of training and.
Yeah, we're moving them forward from call-taking to, it's a process.
Yeah.
They have to go call-taking, police, fire, so.
Do you plan to interview them in the future?
Yeah, yeah. We have to get them tested first and go from there. Thank you.
Paul Luber?
Commissioners, good morning. This morning I have no items to present.
That's easy. Kenny, Mr. Gary.
First, I request the Board of Commissioners ratify the 10 million new contracts among the June 2024. Asking for a vote on this plan.
Can we move a motion? So. Second. Any question?
Mr. Pedro.
Yes.
Mr. Heatherington.
Yes.
Commissioner Hess.
Yes.
And on behalf of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board and School Community Action, Kate Swalfer, Director of Planning at School Community Action Administrative Agency for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board proposes Ken Hugner, Ann Hoover-Smith, Kay Williams, and Karen Kenderdine to be approved to serve another two-year term on the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board determined July 1st, 2024 to June 30, 2026. Next approval is requested by the Act 137 Trust Fund Board as the following recommendations for the 2024 School County Affordable Housing Trust Fund and to execute agreements upon grant approval between the county of School and the below-referenced service providers. The Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board respectfully recommends funding for the following six projects and a reserve account. The School of Holt Center, $9,173. School County Housing Authority is $30,578. Service to all, $12,231. School Community Land Bank, $27,520. School Community Action for the School County Housing Repair Program for Senior Services is $33,024. School Community Action for the School County Bridge House Program, $24,462. And for our reserve account, $10,002. Total is $146,990. Lastly, on behalf of MIS, approve a consulting contract with Boyle Electro-Mechanical for assistance valuation. The contract is for $120 per hour with a total cap not to exceed $33,000. Contract for one from July 1st to December 31st, 2024.
Thank you. Just on that, Mr. Chairman, just to change that date, I don't think.
No, I agree.
He's not in the building, as is Riley doing from, he's not actually.
No, it's just all work, just preparing. He hasn't done any work inside his own unit, it's true, but it's just to get prepared.
And also to make sure that it's definitely worked in unison with MIS along with them to, as progressives, not in a separate situation or whatever. So that's my suggestion, I guess, if we can do that.
What would you want to start out with? Next one is that?
When, whenever we vote on it, finally, we should.
Yeah, once I.
That's the way the contract should read. And also that they work in unison, because I know in the past that we did something with the Army National Guard, so utilizing what was done. They know what was done there and can compile some things so it can actually be even a stronger report, definitely with their input and also again, outside people coming in to look to see whatever. I'd also try to blend that report together because the Army National Guard was here for a number of weeks doing something, and that was before you came in, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, so. That was Cyber Security, right?
That was, yes.
Yeah, Cyber Security Investigation. Okay. Human Resources.
Good morning Commissioners. We are seeking approval of an agreement between Revive.
We are seeking approval of an agreement between Revive Health and County Schuylkill for virtual primary care, virtual urgent care, and mental health therapy in addition to 1,000-plus generic medications at no cost to employees and retirees. The cost to the county is as follows for singles, $12 per subscriber. Two parties, $16.50 per subscriber, and families, $20 per subscriber. So the annual cost of $150,396 will be offset through a monthly reduction in the county's medical billing with our broker, Medicon, so that cost to us will be zero. In addition, I have personnel actions. In the prison, we have the appointment of Vanessa Chavir, as a correction officer part-time. Rate is 23.0730, effective date 7/15/24. And then we have one informational item in the clerk reports. The appointment of Christine Chen as a clerk three, effective 7/15/24. That's per the contract. All appointments are pending. Drug tests and physicals are appropriated, and all actions involving salary or work positions being created are pending salary board approval.
Tony, can you just give a brief exclamation on the Revive program? I know it's giving some extra services to all the county employees and actually, basically at no cost, I think, so.
Yeah, well, sure. Though the program does have a cost, but because it steers people toward virtual care, the savings generally will cover the cost. So the benefits manager has indicated that it will be no cost to us, although the program does have a cost. And because the services are at no cost, the experience in the past, as well as been introduced, employees generally get on board and participate hardly, because they will see savings immediately from their own pockets.
I believe when we spoke with, well, Medicon Revive, this has been done other counties very successfully, right?
Yes.
We're not the first ones to try this, right?
No, we are. And if they use the related healthcare plan, if you buy off of their, if you buy through their mail-in list of generic, of their drugs, there's no COVID. Correct. So it helps the employees with their COVID. Now, everybody got an email. I was a little, I was like, hey, what's this email? But, you know, alcohol employees in the county and everything. And it's just, it's a benefit that's covered, and it's offset by the savings. So it's at no cost. It'll cost no more for our healthcare for this. Because of the savings they generate, it covers the cost of it.
And the employees will say, could they utilize it, right?
Yes. Plus, they have access to mental health services, virtual mental health services, which nobody knows that's in demand. And often, if you go live, you may have to travel a lot to get there.
Thank you.
And then, anything on new business? I'm turning to you. Gary Ossari here. Gary attended the Coal Cracker Regional Racing Hall of Fame in 2023. And so Gary, if you want to read the name of the people that were inducted into us.
Sure.
The last number of years, and I believe this is the fifth or sixth year that we've been doing it, Coal Region Racing is a group that recognizes naturally the dirt track and also pavement racing within the county. And again, I was amazed over the years of how many tracks there was throughout the years. So again, it's motorsports, and a lot of people are involved. And they started a Hall of Fame in inducting different people that were instrumental. And basically, it is a legacy here in the Anthracite area. So along with them inducting, we also have given out the proclamations, which tell a little bit of the story of what each individual has done over the years. And they hold this every year. In this past year, there was 11 of them. Five of them posthumous that were given to their family members. And I would like that, as we've done in the past, read off the names, because these are proclamations. And usually, if the person is here, we vote on the proclamations and accept them. So also to make sure that the record that they're entered in in the Hall of Fame goes into our formal minutes. So with that, the 2024 Coal Region Racing Hall of Fame inductees were Larry Aker, Francis Burke, Larry Graver, Keith Prudsmann, Bill Quinter, Michael Ridoka, and posthumous was Joe Lewis, Doug Hoffman, Don Loder, Cecil Thompson Senior, and Warren Ruffner. So I'd like to make that in form of motion that we accept those proclamations to give in those folks.
I'm sorry, I'm reading very slow. Other question?
Commissioner Pedora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
I just want to tell everybody how happy Fourth of July is, celebrating the independence of our country.
Controller's Board, informing the executive sessions?
We're done, Hal.
Public comment?
I'll let you get away this week. Do we have a new public comment policy for salary board yet?
There isn't.
Okay.
There isn't.
There is. Okay. Okay, that's good. So then there's no policy to go off of.
Nope.
Okay, so how about the nepotism policy? None? Okay. So we violated that with the interns. We violated that with Ann Dudish. We're violating that with Boots. Now we're violating it with Larry. And the state's recommending we have one, but we don't have one. So that's very good to know. We have no public comment policy that you keep yelling at me to sit down during this. No nepotism policy that the state's recommending.
I don't yell at you.
No, he does.
Okay, and they have it.
Right. But we have no nepotism policy that is constantly being violated, so.
Nepotism's for family.
No, it's not. Look it up. Look it up. Look up what nepotism is. Dave, do you have, do you know what the definition of nepotism is? Can you clarify it for him? It's not just family.
From the top of my head, no.
Business associates for close friends. Yes, okay. So thank you for clarifying that. But also, backdating, this was brought up many times ago, and Melinda just brought it up. I remember for certain Sharon was adamant about this. No more backdating, no more backdating. That was several months ago. Why are we doing it now? It's continuing. It's not just today either, and not just with Nick's contract, it's with plenty of others. And the last thing I have is, right now, we're roughly, and this is salary board related, so you can't yell at me. About $20,000 is what we've paid Ken Hatter so far, roughly, to sit and work from home. When does the bleeding stop? When is somebody else gonna be, when's he gonna be held accountable? When's this investigation gonna actually take place? You have somebody that you said is an outside source investigating this. Where's the investigation?
I know you don't like to answer to personnel, which you're not allowed to talk to.
Well, can't you get on their, on their backs and try to get something done?
It should come to a conclusion shortly.
That's a leadership in an office that's lacking. See, that wasn't very hard. See?
See?
Thank you. It's all in here.
Any other public comment?
Melinda Dybert, North Mannheim Township. This does have to do with salary board. I will call it salary enrichment. In January of this year, Commissioner Heatherington stated, "No family member, no Heatherington would receive any farmland preservation funds." Really? Might want to rethink that. On June 5th, designated contracts were approved by none other than Commissioner Heatherington for his brother, Richard Heatherington, to have the appraisal paid for in preparation for, okay, I'll say the parcel is in Richard's name, but I guarantee you Richard's not doing the farming on that parcel. So in preparation for his brother's parcel to be approved to receive farmland preservation funds, absolutely a conflict of interest, should have abstained. You did not. Even more egregious is what happened in August of 2022. Commissioner Halkovich was absolutely correct in stating that Boots Heatherington should abstain from pursuing farmland preservation funds while serving as commissioner. As commissioner, you voted to divert ARPA COVID funds, money that the county received, and you diverted that into farmland preservation. Sorry, all you small business owners, first responders, no soup for you. They received nothing. Meanwhile, you pumped a whole bunch of money into farmland preservation. And you turned around in August of 2022 at that meeting and voted on your own survey and appraisal fees to be paid. It was absolutely a conflict of interest. Even though you had no financial interest in the appraisal firm or the survey firm, your parcel would have been stopped dead in its tracks for approval to get farmland preservation funds if that appraisal and survey had not been completed. So you absolutely had a financial gain in that being approved. Commissioner Halkovich voted no, and you and Commissioner Hess voted yes. And I know, Commissioner Hess, you actually asked your solicitor, Paul Dotty, for an opinion on that, and he was absolutely incorrect in stating that it was not a conflict of interest. It absolutely was. Thank you.
Any other public comment for Senator Board? Anyone who has personnel?
Yes, Commissioners. In the Controller's Office, we're creating a position, interim payroll specialist trainee, effective 7/10/24. In court administration, we have three wage adjustments for Julie Solo, law clerk, legal deputy administrator, $250 biweekly, effective 7/15/24. Merrill Peterman, law clerk, $250 biweekly, 7/15/24. And Michael Sands, law clerk, $250 biweekly, effective 7/15/24. That is all.
Thank you. Any new business?